All the planning commission meeting for Wednesday, December the fourteenth order at seven o'clock. Could I please get the roll call or excuse me, please.
Please signify the United States of America and to the Republic of the British and One Nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair King, Vice Chair Lavante, Commissioner House, Commissioner Condel, Commissioner Van Domeling, Commissioner Nunnencamp, Commissioner Miller, and your executive this evening is Counselor James Page. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five is the officer election. We will take a nominations for to elect a planning commission chair for two thousand twenty-three. I'll open the nominations.
I nominate Heather Lavante. For chair.
For chair. What? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, closed the nominations. So now there have been two nominations for the chair position. The Commissioner Lavante, Commissioner King. So all those that would like Commissioner Lavante, say, raise your hand. Okay, and all those for Commissioner King.
Three to three?
Four to three.
Four to two.
Four to two, yeah.
You didn't raise your hand.
No, neither.
Did you want to nominate someone else?
Okay, so with that count then, Commissioner King will be the chair for twenty-four.
I never asked, I never received anything. Am I up for next year?
You are, I'm sorry.
Okay, I didn't even think about that.
All announced now, yes. I don't know about that. Got approved for another four-year term at the last council meeting, yes.
Okay.
She was.
Open the nominations for vice chair for twenty twenty-three.
I nominate Heather.
I nominate Heather.
Guys.
You're doing a good job.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, closed the nominations. So we have Commissioner Nunnencamp and Commissioner Lavante for vice chair. All those in favor of Commissioner Nunnencamp, raise your hand. All those in favor of Commissioner Lavante, raise your hand. So it looks like it is more the one, or five of them, excuse me, five of them. Okay, so move on to item number six is the public comments. There's no one in the audience. Is there anyone on the Zoom that has any public comments of any commission business that is not on the agenda? Hearing or seeing none?
Oh, yes, she has.
What?
She attends every meeting just.
No comment, okay. So let the record show there's no comment. Okay, item number seven is the minutes for November, approval of the minutes for November the ninth. Are there any corrections?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Then move by Commissioner Condel, second by Commissioner Nunnencamp for approval of the November ninth minutes as presented. All those in favor, say hi. Any opposed? So the minutes are approved. Okay, item number eight is the new business review of zoning map.
Yes.
If you're commissioner.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so what we were hoping to do today is to just chat with you about the current zoning map. And about some of the districts that we have and how they interface with some of the other districts in the city to see if maybe we should consider alternatives on for some of these properties as we move into the UGB expansion conversation next year. So I'll show my screen again. And I will pull up our webpage and get a copy of the zoning map. Glasses are falling off the table. So this should be the same map that you have in your pocket. See if I can make it a little bit bigger. Someone took over my computer. Sorry for that. Okay. Apologize for the delay there. That's why I did that. So I might have to go up to the bathroom. It's a little hard to see everything from here. So I'll just grab my.
You're controlling this.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So, as you know, we're working on the proposal put together for the UGB expansion. And in addition to that, we're also working on the downtown improvement plan. So we can also kind of match these things up in terms of an overall picture for the city. And so as we're looking at the map, trying to come up with some ideas on zoning for the city. You know, the commercial street area always gets some attention, you know, on what we have there. And one of the things that we've been kicking around in the office is typically a nice downtown is about four to five blocks, which usually for us would be about three oh nine down to Main Street is about that area. And as you can see, we kind of have a mix of zoning in that area all the way through. One idea would be to rezone the White House of the city owns of the Yellow House and the Red House to commercial to match the rest of the zoning here. And then also rezone the church and this property right here to commercial. So you have commercial running all the way through the area. Also, we would talk about, is there any interest in doing anything to this area? I understand there's some history with that area and talking with Andy. That maybe at one time it was so one way and maybe it's gone back and forth through over the years. Another area is the church down here, rezone that to residential. So it matches the neighborhood. So if the church use ever ceases to exist, it would be prime for residential development without having to go through a rezone.
Well, before you go any farther, the institutional, they're just overlays. It's already a residential zone for the church. It's an underlying residential zone. It's the institutional that's an overlay. Also, the white building is also commercial. It's the institutional zone that's an overlay. So it's already a zone commercial or was until the overlay.
I'm not sensing that's the understanding of people in City Hall.
Well, they don't understand.
So.
I think Heather changed that though, when we added the institutional. And actually made it a zone change.
And it is an actual zone in the code.
Well, they're, they changed it because that's what it was.
Okay, yeah, so I'm just, I'm just kind of sharing the facts as I understand them with you. And if there's something that you have, that's great, you know, we can dive into that and take a closer look. But as I understand it, this is zone and not an overlay. I'll dive into that a little bit more.
No, you're right. It was a zone, but I mean, it was commercial until they rezoned it as institutional.
What was the flip-flop property you were talking about?
I know, you pointed too fast.
What was the flip-flop property you were talking about?
The flip-flop?
Yeah, you said some property.
He's talking about the, the property along Commercial Street between the, that's flip-flop, but that's not, yeah, it's above that, not below.
Yeah, it's above it. You were pointing below. That's why I was asking.
Yeah, I was talking about this area right here.
Well, that's the flip-flop property. The flip-flop property is farther north inside the.
The pink property.
Yeah, inside the.
On the other side of the road. Are you talking about the residential here?
Yes, that's the flip-flop.
Okay, okay. No, again, you know, a lot of information coming in from a lot of different people. So I appreciate, you know, I need your historical references to make sure I understand what, you know, has happened. So I appreciate that. The other area we were looking at was this area. We'd like to try and think about a park in this area. We also thought maybe a higher density residential might be a better fit for the residential that's already around it versus some type of light industrial use as we're seeing, you know, we're already kind of seeing the run here, right, between heavy industrial next to residential. And, you know, some of the comments have come out of recent proposals that are happening on the industrial property in that sector of the city. So the idea is, you know, is this is just like a compatible zone for what's there right now and what's coming, you know, this will be residential subdivision. And so it's just something to think about. It's not saying, you know, we're going to do it. It's more, what are your thoughts? Do you, do you see zoning?
I think you ought to talk to the property.
Well, that's what would happen. That's what would happen. I mean, we're trying to have a conversation with the planning commission.
Right now may have been already sold as industrial.
He may, you know, so those will be the conversations if we came out of a meeting like this and there was some head nodding, that would be a good idea, you know, we would do the next step and then contact the Canadian.
Who did you have the meeting with? Pardon? Who was all the head nodding with?
You folks. You folks would be the head nutters.
No, no, I thought you said you had a meeting.
No, I'm saying.
You talked to, where you're getting all this history from.
No, no, excuse me, let me back up. I'm saying that's what this meeting would be. You know, if the head nods from you folks came that some of these things make sense, then we would follow through on the staff and then do the outreach to let these folks know what we're thinking to see what their thoughts are, see if there would be pushback, to see if there would be agreement, those type of things. So, you know, we're in the very, very early stages of this whole process.
Were you thinking of this in conjunction with the UGB expansion or doing it prior to the UGB expansion?
It would be done most likely in conjunction with the UGB.
Because I was gonna say, you can't do any resident, or zoning changes from industrial to residential right now. Because our plan shows that we have a deficit. There's no way we can.
Well, that's the whole thing. What we're trying to do is if we shuffle stuff that are around in our current city limits, AKA UGB, to get some zoning that we need, that might not be compatible, get it changed, then that plays into the overall analysis that we're going to do for the UGB expansion on what our new need is, right? So if we take some industrial land and we zone it high density residential, right, and we know we lose that, then we're going to have to find that when we bring in the new land in the UGB, right? So it's kind of a show game, a little bit of, let's maybe massage some stuff in here that might not be compatible and then relocate it in the UGB expansion and get it in an area that might make more sense. And then put some residential land or some other type of zoning where we would like to have maybe some commercial downtown or we would like to have some residential and kind of go that route. So it's setting the table for the proposal that would come from the three J consultant on the UGB expansion. Does that help answer your question we're trying to?
It does. I'm just, I'm just saying, you can't do one without the other currently. They have to go hand in hand.
So anything that would change here, we would have supporting documents in the proposal for the UGB expansion that address that.
Before the UGB is expanded.
Pardon?
I don't think you could even do it before the UGB is expanded.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It would be together. The proposal to change the zoning here would coincide with the UGB expansion and they would support one another, right? So if we did any change in here, like I said, then you would see it on the back and in the UGB proposal getting. So this is heavy industrial right here at this property, right? So it's the one with the gas station is right here at the corner, or not the gas station, but the automotive repair shop that just went up for sale.
It's sold.
It did sell. I saw that. That's just.
It's commercial, it's commercial, highway commercial, not heavy.
Excuse me, you're right. It's highway commercial, I'm sorry. The idea is that lot large enough to accommodate the type of uses that you would see with highway commercial or would it be better to be just the C one zone?
Everything needs to be.
Everything else in the, in the downtown floor, you know, so you'd have everything that would be part of your downtown similarly zone. So the uses would be compatible, it would match up with one another. That would be the idea for that. You know, in terms of, for example, we have industrial zone here next to residential. So we get, we get a lot of phone calls from the folks that back up to Aiken. Aiken's a good business. I've never seen them have any trouble with the neighbors that live by there, you know, have had some issues with just late night hours, things like that. They called us and complained. So I just, that's just an FYI to you, you know, just to show you that this is a little rough on the edges, you know, residential right next to industrial. And we have it extended down another block. And I'm not sure how familiar I am with this area, but this here is a residence. This is a residence. This is a residence and this is a business. We were thinking it might be more compatible to have something out of an industrial in that area since it backs up to residential. Maybe residential itself. And, you know, when you change a zone on something like this, where you have an existing use and you change it to a zone where maybe it's a conditional use or it's not even allowed in that zone, it wouldn't preclude the business from continuing to operate. What it would preclude them from doing is expanding, becoming bigger if we were to change the zone. And then if it were to sell, then it would be subject to the new uses in that zone that was there. So it would become, you know, a lot of people will call it grandfather, but what we refer to it as legal microform use if you were to change the zone. So those are just some of the areas that we were looking at that we thought, you know, might be something to consider. Again, the church property. This area in here, I will do the research to find out if it is an overlay and that it actually is commercial. And so, you know, the, the post office property. So civic uses, governmental uses, things of that nature are uses that are allowed in the commercial zone. We feel that there's a possibility that over time the post office could move somewhere. And if it did, it would be nice to have that property already zone commercial. So a new use could just roll right into it under that zoning. But it wouldn't preclude the post office from being there. The post office is actually useless allowed in the commercial zone. And so those are just some of the ideas that we have been kicking around in the office, you know, that we wanted to bring to you today to share with you to let you know that there are maybe some potential zoning districts out there that back up to other zoning districts that might not be overall compatible. And then maybe there's some areas of the city that we might be able to acquire some new zoning in the city. Likely to be residential down here. Here, again, we'd have to talk to the property owner, see what his thoughts are, see if there's been a sale of the property or whatnot. To try and kind of soften the edges a little bit between, you know, single family residential and industrial. Because we're already seeing that, you know, it's a bit of an issue when you have industrial next to residential. So with that, I'll just open it up to you guys for conversations, discussions, things that you would like to share with us. We're just trying to, like I said, hear from you and get your feedback on if you feel that there's anything in the city that we should take into consideration as we go through the UGB expansion that we could address now, everything that's in, so then we can do a better proposal for you on the backside with the UGB proposal.
Well, just a couple things that I want to bring up while you're standing there. Before you sit down. There's a, the block that's just to the west of the institutional, which is on. On the Bubblasco.
Or here?
Further up, further up. There. Okay, that block just to the west of that, that's an old platted part of the city, which some of those houses are on fifty by a hundred, but yet somehow it got zoned to an R seven point five. That's, that block, whole block should be an R five zone. I don't know when that happened.
Yeah, so you would like us to look at this block as all being all R five, just.
Just to the west, west, walk to the west of the green.
Right, right, right here.
Yes.
Okay.
Now that's an old platted part of the city, fifty by a hundred. Now, why it's seven point five is, I don't understand when that happened. That should not be seven point five.
So you say this should be different than the rest of the R seven, seven point.
Yeah, it's R five. It's all fifty by a hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know when somebody zoned it to seven point five. We didn't zone it to seven point five. So somebody must made a mistake, but they didn't have.
Okay, so we will look at that block right there.
Yeah, then come, come down to where it says commercial and above the A. A and commercial, those two little green lots, the garden, are those public use? That's a zone?
I believe. Oh, right, I thought those were the two houses.
No, those, that's the public garden and that's owned by the people that own the flower real deal and there are no reason that's institutional.
Again, those would be ones that we would, I mean, even at commercial, you could have the public garden in there.
Right, but I don't know why it's institutional.
I, I don't either.
It's privately owned.
And the red house publicly is actually C one zone. Yes, I'm sorry. I got, I missed. They're over here. This is the red house and this is the yellow house. So I apologize. I was off quite a lot there. Yes.
So are you wanting to rezone all churches then to the French?
Well, we just went through this probably less than ten years ago and put all this institutional zone and covered all these other zones. Probably five years ago, we went through this whole exercise and said, let's make that institutional. Now all of a sudden, we're going to go back and return it back to the zone that it was?
I wasn't here, so you're educating. That's all I can tell you. I have, I was not here. I don't know what you folks did before. No one has brought that to my attention.
You're talking to the wrong people.
I only talk to the people that are available to me in the office. Well, when I thought that church is down there, it is actually the little church is actually zoned R two point five.
Well, it was, but then somebody put the institutional zone on it.
But if you go on the tax records of it, it actually says R two point five.
Wow, they probably all see that. Have you looked at the others?
Yeah.
Okay.
So again, that's what we'll do. I mean, we'll go back in there and then take a closer look at those institutional zones to see, you know, is it an overlay? Is it a zone? Is it really commercial? Is it residential? And get some clarification for you on that. We'll go back and try and find out what happened here, why that did not come seven point five. And try and get some clarity for you on that.
I'd also like to consider rezoning all the NC zones.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And you know, in terms of rezoning it, I'm not sure the benefit, maybe you can help me understand like the current zone for the ones that are currently developed.
Trying to eliminate the NC zone. NC zone was some thing that we.
Supposed to be an intermediate.
Yeah, well, it's supposed to be a holding zone like an FD ten and never got resolved. And then subdivisions came in and so now we're stuck with this dog. And, you know, we're going to have a mixed use area that's in the NC zone. There's no identification that it's a mixed use area. Because it's just NC zone. But yet we took a school that was an NC zone and called it institutional. Let's take that off and make it NC again.
It'll also help us in the future when we evaluate how much R two point five we have and how much R five and seven five.
It'll also evaluate that so much better than density. I mean, I think, you know, in terms of zoning, something like this is already done, already developed and has, you know, homes on them. I'm not sure what the benefit is to something like that.
I just told you one benefit.
Is there any downside?
But I mean, they would be, they would be substandard.
Is there any downside?
Our seven on there, the small lots would be substandard to home lots. If I put our five on it, it would be too small. Same with over here. The town home lots would not fall into the zoning district other than the NC zone that we have right now.
Oh, they fall into the R two point five, the way we got the R two point five zone.
Okay, but it was my understanding that these were smaller, these lots. Just makes sense to get rid of that whole thing.
So they were trying to come up with new code for the expansion area. That should, new code should cover to be able to rezone the NC zone and get rid of the NC zone. That's my opinion.
So can you look into what it would take to rezone these things into zones to get to get rid of that intermediate NC?
Rezone these current projects into it and intermediate.
All the NC into real code numbers, our zones.
Our zone. Yeah.
They don't have to fit into the cookie cutter R zones that we have now because we're going to have to re-modify the zones when we do their, you know, the expansion area. And so let's make them fit that because it's basically the same type of subdivision. The old city is all done in rectangles. The new stuff is done in circulars, different, you know, so whatever that code is should be applied to the NC zone.
Those, those will certainly be things I believe that will come forward to you when Tree J has a proposal for the UGB expansion ready for you to start reviewing and everybody to get back on. So I guess the takeaway that I have is to discuss rezoning the NCs to see how we can do that through the UGB expansion process more in line with the R zones that we have right now. And it could be, depending on, you know, what we have, it might be, you might get R two and a half right here. And then you might get R five back here and then, you know, depending on the lot size. Yeah, just to witness your role in this.
And we, we have to wait till we bring in.
No, it would just be part of the overall proposal, you know, to just kind of dress this the way that you would like to see it. So even though it's not going to change anything, it's still residential land and it's not a residential, it has no bearing on the overall proposal. It would just be to try and clean things up because we're taking the opportunity to do that right now with UGB expansion.
Really bad part of that at this point would be that it could take away from the future expansion, figuring in the lots that haven't been developed yet as part of the housing needs analysis. Awesome.
Right.
So it could be, that could be the only downside to it a little bit.
Right. The main thing I would like to see is separations from mixed use and residential because the NC zone is just, there's no, there's, you know, then the sign code says, well, that portion of the property that's institutional or that portion that's commercial or mixed use, well, what portion is it? There's no identification on the zoning.
It's so hard to figure decipher between all this different stuff. If it was all one thing, it's easy to go to the book and look and it's all the same.
You're just talking about the zoning from residential.
Everything's on the same, makes it so.
Or is commercial in there too?
For the neighborhood community, you can't look at a map and say what an excuse site is.
And just in the north, there's no mixed use site there now. Currently, it's all, it's NC, but.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, if you go into the NC zone, the NC zone does allow for mixed uses. So it's.
Does allow, but it's not identified in a zone.
Right, but it's. I mean, we could go in there and it's on that little corner mixed use.
In the piece over there at the east.
Also, we would just create a new zone, right? We don't have a mixed use zone right now per se. I mean, the NC zone is, we don't have a standard of mixed use zone.
One is a mixed use if it was, you know, developed as actual C one, but obviously that is.
I mean, the C one zone is a type of mixed use.
Not an NC code.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's something our code is lacking is mixed use language.
That's why we want to get.
Yeah, and that, that is really what, for now, I mean, and this would be something that could come through the UGB expansion process, but for now, the C one zone is kind of the default mixed use because it does allow for, you know, that type of use where you have commercial on the first floor or residential above that. That is a use that's allowed right now in C.
Right, but that's where we get into trouble in our NC zones, trying to apply code to mixed use when we don't have a lot fallback in our code. We just have what's in the NC zone.
Right, well, I'm saying the NC zone is addressing mixed use for development in that zone and the C one is addressing mixed use and C one zone for development there.
Right, but it's not very good.
It's not completely. That's fine. I mean, that's fine. Those are the things that we can tweak, you know, through the UGB expansion process. If we need to go in and address a zoning district or eliminate one and create a new one, those are the type of things that come from this process. So as, as they roll out the proposal to you, as Tree J rolls out the proposal, those would be the type of things that you could ask them. Well, we see what you're doing, but we, we don't want it to be C one anymore down here. We want a downtown mixed use zone and that's what we want it to be zone. Or you say something to the effect of, you know, we don't want any more NC zones. We would like to either keep what we have and just leave it like that or change it to some R zoning. And then, you know, whatever land. Or change it to some R zoning and then, you know, whatever land comes in in future, it will not be zoned NC. It will be zoned maybe R five or R two and a half or something like that. Knowing that, um, if somebody wanted to do a development, then at that time, they probably would either have to do it, you know, kind of a standard subdivision, you know, standard lot sizes per the zoning district and whatnot, street sizes and whatnot. Or request a planning unit development approval to get some type of deviation, you know, something like this through a, um, planning unit development. So that's kind of what the NC zone did without having to go through a planning unit development is they kind of took aspects of what a planning unit development could be. And put that into the NC zone and allow for a wide variety of uses and, and, uh, lot sizes and, uh, and all that. Thus, so they kind of captured it with the NC zone. That's why these folks did not do a planning unit development. They just went through and did the subdivision per the NC zone standards.
Right, but can I tell you the city lost tax revenue on that for two years because it came through as, it's zoned as NC. And so the appraisal division just put residential future tract on it and wasn't appraising it as a mixed use site, which is a lot more valuable.
And I appreciate that insight because I know that you work for the county and have that type of insight.
That's why it's so important.
Is that just a thing between us communicating with the county on that or how does that happen in terms of that, that gap, that slippage?
Well, most, most areas have to find commercial or residential and because we're allowing mixed use in a primarily residential area. It wasn't defined for them to look at. The only way they need to see it is to search the city's, um, development review approvals. Otherwise, they would have had no indication.
So that was, that's kind of how the county assessor did that.
But I asked why it wasn't being appraised as commercial.
Gotcha. No, no, I appreciate that. Um, you know, that's something that maybe we need to do a little bit better job of communicating with the county now when you subdivisions come in so they know, um, what it is, uh, so we don't lose that tax.
Well, I have a property that I think, and Stuart alluded to it, is we talked about where the capital, the capital shop is. Seems like that the property from there to the east to the new building that was built should be zone C one.
You're talking over here?
Yes, right there. All that, all the way to the new building they just finished should be C one. Actually, the new building is being used as a C one use currently anyways, but it just makes sense to have that C one. I don't, it heavy industrial, I don't.
Yeah, that's the.
Highway commercial.
Highway. That's highway commercial.
C two matches all this.
Yeah, but it isn't gonna, I don't think it's creating anything good. I think to have some C one there usually a little more mixed use, right, so.
That's it.
It makes it hard to do downtown where it did.
Yes, ironically, the person that owns the building right there is the person who's painting City Hall right now. Uh, and so, uh, we chatted with him a little bit about, what are you getting planned for the other half of your property over here? And he, he's not sure yet, but maybe that would be something we could capture by zoning it C one and, and.
We're talking about the property to the west of that, not to the east.
If you just took that whole size from that new building all the way west. For the parking lot.
And we talked about that.
Yeah, I know.
Because this was just recently approved for tents, homes.
It's, it's been re-zoned for what, ten, twelve years?
Yeah.
And nothing ever works on there, so.
Right, so they have never do anything with it.
It used to be.
Somebody is doing something.
We haven't told that they're going to start building on it this summer.
Can we zone it before they, we zone?
Well, I mean, they've already been approved, you know, for development of that property. That's okay, but they kind of changed that.
No, it's approved.
No, it hasn't ever come for us.
Yeah, but it's approved as individual tax lots.
Yeah.
Lots of record.
And they, right, and they tried to, they only had, I forgot how many parcels. And they were trying to include more. They were trying to include more parcels than they actually had. You can't include a half lot. It's not a discreet lot. So I don't know if the city approved it.
I wasn't here. That's all I can say.
Your whole.
Before my time. But that was the idea of starting here, you know, and getting that consistency through your commerce, I mean, to Main Street was to get that all commercial. So you would get those type of mixed uses, you know, again, and I, and I'm just speaking from what, um, I've heard from others, people I've talked to, um. You know, I, I understand that maybe there's been some conversation about the, um, area over west link called the Willamette, uh, area there. That's, uh, kind of a, a four or five block, uh, commercial zone over there that is fairly attractive to people. Um, so we're kind of looking at how, what do they have in that area? What makes that so functional and operate so well, you know? And it seems to be that, you know, it is, it's not a large area. It's, it is limited to about four or five blocks. Um, it's very walkable. Um, it, uh, has a lot of different, uh, mixed use type of uses in there. They're, they're smaller. I think those buildings, the tallest building is only about three stories. And so it just has limited living, um, is primarily commercial, uh, but that seems to be something that has become a very attractive area. So we, we're kind of looking at different models, areas that are in that four to five block range or some areas over in Penn. They got, uh, area on the west side that's about that big, you know, doesn't have quite the height limits that you would see here. But again, it's that four to five block area, getting some density and they're getting some uses that provide, that provide kind of a nightlife that provide, you know, street activity that bring people out and then get them involved and engaged. So that's, that's what we're kind of looking here. What can we do to stimulate something here that would bring in developers that would want to build the type of uses that you folks would like to see? That could help add value to the downtown and bring in people that would, um, you know, maybe stop.
You're, you're kind of talking about something that's similar to what we're trying to create even down off the, off of Main Street, North Avenue. So we had a large area there that was supposed to have been a mixed use commercial. Well, now we've gotten them back to what they want, four thousand square feet only, something like that. But the thing is, the, the thing that you're trying to recreate there could be easily recreated up there, but you don't spend forty thousand on it.
Right.
The reason we're focused. They keep, uh, trying to talk about Dubois or whatever it is.
That doesn't look anything like.
Or have the connections to commercial that we do.
So we're not doing that. For, for this area, we're not even talking that.
I know, but anyway, it's back to what you were talking about there along Commercial Street on the north side. That, uh, institutional in there, go back five years, it was all C one. So all you have to do is just get rid of the institutional zone in that area.
That, that was the idea.
Yeah, but I don't know if the church was gonna like it.
Again, it wouldn't.
They were, it was a commercial zone before it became institution. Because they don't pay taxes anyway. They don't care.
They're allowed in them.
They're allowed in the commercials also, won't impact them.
Yes.
And, you know, since we're talking about churches and we're talking about taxes and things of that nature, um, that is one thing I wanted to follow up with you on Heather is. We wanted to kind of dive into this a little bit and see what was going on because, um, I'm not sure, um, if it would be you at the county I don't want to have to work with or not. But, um, we're trying to figure out what is going on with that property. In terms of ownership, church activity, taxes.
One of people died, they just haven't been back. They've been doing web since, uh, COVID.
Well, it's launching as a church. They just don't want to sell property.
Yeah, I know they don't. They don't want to get taxed.
It was, it's got water. They had a massive water leak. They got issues, the building's got issues, but they can do.
The guy across the street.
Yeah, the guy across the street's just.
Or lease it.
Yeah, right.
But then it becomes accessible.
Yes, it is. Just got to prove it now.
Because accessible and it triggers today's values, not measure bars, but fifty.
So, uh, just kind of going back over some of the most recent comments, it sounds like, um, there is interest in maybe doing some changing of the zoning along Commercial Street for properties or zones institutional. Um, to get them back to being commercial or if it is an overlay, just acknowledge it as an overlay and not commercial. Um, it's just a commercial zone with an overlay because it's an institutional. So I will dive into that and confirm that. If it is a zone, if it is actually a zone institutional, and I just want to make sure I've, I've got this right for you folks. You would be in support of rezoning it, the institutional zone and commercial to co- or to commercial.
I don't know how you can, you can choose which institutional you're rezoning. If you're going to rezone institutional, you got to rezone all of them. I don't know how you can get just commercial, but.
Not necessarily.
What's the purpose of institutional zone?
I don't know. Nobody has been able to give me anything for that.
Well, if it burnt down, I guess.
The only thing I could tell is that that's where an institution was, so I've got an institutional zone.
Because that's the only reason that it's non-conforming and it burned and they don't get it. I thought they created the institu- institutional zone, so you didn't have to apply, um, we have so much C one over here.
Right, that's exactly why I thought we didn't. It didn't count towards our housing needs.
Right. That's right, yeah.
What? So again, I mean, if we were to go to commercial, those would be things that, you know, would come out. And so as we're going through the UDB expansion process, if we're going to change those to a commercial, then that would bring new commercial land in to the city, right? Give us some additional square footage of commercial.
But the truth is now not going to be. And we're not gonna say, oh, let's just move on.
I understand, and I'm not saying it's going to happen tomorrow. I'll tell you what, when you, when you have. I was blown away what people took down in the city of bed when I was working there. So I, I got to the city of bed when it was twenty thousand. I left when it was eighty five thousand.
Wow.
Between twenty thousand and eighty five thousand, I saw churches go away, golf courses go away, movie theaters get torn down. Um, places that you never, ever would have thought leave left, you know, because the value of the property went up and people wanted to get it. Churches, you know, for better or worse, are, are losing some membership over the years. Um, and so I, I don't know what they're, you know, that they're going to hang around.
It is actually a free strike.
Let me ask you a question, uh. Because City Hall is institutional, but it used to be a commercial zone. So, uh, why is it institutional? And can you just all of a sudden said, what to take to go from an institutional zone back to a commercial zone? Since that was the underlying zone before it was changed institution.
In terms of what it would take from the city to do that?
For anybody.
I mean, we would put forth a proposal, we would just all the land.
No, no, I'm talking about each lot, one at a time. Hey, I decided I want to go commercial again.
There would be on a case by case basis, um, with people bringing forward your request to do a zone change.
So City Hall and.
A map change, so you're talking about a lot of money for each person to do it individually.
It's expensive for each person to do it individually, because when you do a zone change, you know, um, especially when you're going from, you know, uh, maybe a lighter intensity zone to a more intense zone. You, you have to do a lot of traffic analysis and you also have to do a lot of, um, uh, analysis or, um, master plans to make sure that it can support that himself. You know, that the streets are sufficient for that higher use, that the water and sewer can handle a higher use, uh, so it is quite intense to do that.
Even though that's what the zone was before.
Since we would be doing it through the, um, UGB expansion process, we would just capture that in the overall study, uh, that we're doing. So any TIA, I mean, uh, any transportation studies, any, um, bill of land in the Tories, we would capture that with doing the rezone. We would, we would count for that.
Were all these properties identified when they became institutional? Did you have to go through, did the city go through that process?
Find out who was here at that time. So I, I'm, I'm not sure what process we don't.
Well, that's why I'm just wondering. You say you have to do it to do it this way. You got to get a hold of everybody, but was that what happened? What, they changed it to institutional or did they say, hey, we're doing you a favor. We're going to make you an institution?
I can only imagine that there was some notice process as part of that. Again, I wasn't here.
But I, you know, if you're out checking and asking questions, that's one I'd want.
Yeah, and, and that would be, you know, if, if we were going to go forward with that, these programs, we get notes, we would invite them to come in, we want to hear from you. This is what we're thinking. What are your thoughts? Share them with us. Let's talk. Um, that, that's how we would do it. Yes.
So is there any benefit of trying to rush to do this, to do this along with the UDB expansion? And that's just happened after UDB expansion?
Um, there's, there's reasons to do it with UDB expansion because it would give us, you know, it would allow us to capture some new commercial land down here, you know, to, to say that we have.
That's just saying they don't need so much over there then or some other place.
And then it would help us calculate where the need is for how much, you know, for future commercial.
So you do it after the fact, then. What's, what's the?
It's a, it's a little more complicated. I mean, I think the LCD would come back to us and say, why didn't you, why didn't you take that into consideration when you did UDB expansion? Why are you doing it now? You know, we just.
Know that we changed it then.
Yeah, they didn't notice.
Yeah, you say we're putting it back where it was.
But what you're saying is it takes away from the future expansion.
Yeah.
Because it would, um, it would say that maybe because we changed some of this, our, our need is a little bit less for some, for some zoning. But depending on how we zone it.
And so my personal opinion of the housing needs analysis is actually, I think it's, uh, less than we actually put in for the time period that it's allowed for. So doing that doesn't make much sense to me then.
The amount of acreage we're talking about, I don't think it's going to be significant enough to have a detriment to the overall studies that have already been jammed. And to the overall vision that the city has for growing. So, um, you know, taking this and zoning it residential, this is actually three tax lots. I mean, you're, you're talking maybe ten thousand square feet, three homes. Um, I don't think that's really going to have a big impact on, um, your housing needs analysis. Um, you know, putting a few small assets in commercial, um, in the downtown core, adding, you know, maybe three to five acres. I, I don't think it's going to really dent your, um, economic opportunities analysis for commercial use. It's really just trying to get something that's more compatible, something that kind of gives the city some symmetry on where the uses are going to come in. I mean, this is a little odd to have a highway commercial next to a C one that's not even on the highway, right? This just seems to be a spot zone.
It was a continuation.
Yeah, it was all C two across there.
Yeah, so I mean, how it became highway commercial, I don't know. It seems to be highway commercial to.
To all the highway commercial.
But across, yeah, and across the street from it was also. And that got changed to the river. Yeah. I know, yeah. We'll talk about that.
That was before your time.
Fortunately, pretty much everything right now is before my time.
Clean slate.
So I know, um, you know, we're here about an hour now, um, and so, uh, I guess, um. What I'm hearing is there's some general consensus for looking at Commercial Street and maybe doing some, some upzoning, I guess, if you will, from institutional to commercial. Um, is there, is it just the institutional lots that you would like us to look into doing that with? Is there any interest in this lot to C one? Is there any interest in any of the residential lots down here to, to get your downtown? I mean, I think one thing that's really unique about North Plains versus other cities of this size, if you go out of the, the Oregon landscape, but look at cities that are between four to six thousand, uh, residents. Um, almost all of those cities are along the highway. You know, they're kind of strip mall type cities, right? North Plains is not. North Plains actually has a downtown area that could really be a downtown area. And I think that's very unique to this city to have that opportunity. And I think it's something that should really be taken seriously as you go through the UDB expansion process to capture that downtown, make sure you get it right. So it encourages developers to come in here and try and set this downtown up for us.
One thing, one thing about having our downtown the way it is, so is we don't have through traffic, so we don't get that. That business of people driving through the town. So it's kind of off the beaten path a little bit.
Yeah, but I think, you know, you have some attractions in this area. Um, you have the golf course, you have, you have, we're, we're, you know, the city to the sunset. So you have people that are traveling to the coast, um, and as these amenities come in, as the uses come in, a restaurant or something like that, and it gets a reputation. That will encourage people to want to pull off the road and come into the downtown and see it. So obviously it wouldn't happen overnight. We got to get, we got to get the builders to come in and, and bring in some of these new buildings right for us. But having it set up for that, I think is important so you can get that development when the energy is available.
Well, I think also that if you, yeah, I mean, I agree with you a hundred percent in that the commercial downtown, commercial corridor needs to be either lengthened or widened.
Yeah.
Because it's not big enough.
It's not.
So basically your dotted line there is the, uh, Urban Renewal Agency, the dotted line, the red dotted line is the Urban Renewal Agency. Urban renewal agency, the dotted line, the red dotted line is the urban renewal agency, and, and where the post offices, all that from three hundred and eighteen should probably be commercial. See one commercial and then go all the way down to Glencoe, or it's close to the, is that whole corridor, all, you know, all the way down. Either that, or you gotta come across K Burn and widen it so that you have more downtown space, but our traffic pattern isn't set up for that.
I agree a hundred percent, and, and that's what we were kicking around in the office, that, that would make the most sense.
Actually about eight blocks long.
You know, and it's hard to have the blocks, we don't have streets going through, but just kind of, you know, approximating where the blocks are. Yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah, yeah, so, if we went all the way to Glencoe, um.
Especially for all the downtown functions that actually happen. Like, uh, for instance, the car shop, it, it goes from basically down there. All the way down to the middle, so it's kind of a. Some of those functions are pretty good lengthened.
If you guys had an appetite to go more, I, I don't think you'd find pushback from city staff, I think we felt that, you know. Four to five blocks is already maybe where your limits were, but if you have, you know, a, a desire to go larger, um, we can certainly work with you on that, it was just, uh. We didn't know if you'd have that appetite.
That's what I think too.
Well, up to the least of the C two.
Part of the problem with commercial is it's named commercial. So wherever I'm traveling somewhere, and I, I'm kinda lost. When I see Main Street, I always know Main Street's gonna take me to downtown, and that's kinda gonna give me my hair, right? Commercial to me means I'm going, there's more to commercial, like industrial kind of stuff, so.
I think that is very.
And the wayfinding sign is way up there, and I, you know, I don't know how many people look at that, but.
I think it's about, that's another one that we've kicked around. Yeah, maybe we should, we should flip-flop these two, maybe Main should be commercial, and Main, commercial should be Main, so I think you have a lot of support with, with that idea. Obviously, when you change commercial to Main, there's a bit of an impact for the businesses, because they're gonna have to change, and all that. Um, and so typically, if we do that, um, we give them about a year's notice, so we.
I'd say it need to be Main, I'm just saying, it's kind of a crazy, because they, you know, turn down a road.
Commercials slash.
But if, if there was, if there was commercial, you know, uh, buildings all the way to Glencoe, then that might make a person turn. And so, you know, the building that they just built there, if you can see it from the corner, which you can't because of the little hill, right, but. It kinda never get people to come down that way, but they do have another building going there as well.
Which you will realize.
I agree a hundred percent with you, I, I think it is confusing, this street name does cause some confusion, um, and so. Uh, I'm not sure if you're all gonna have the appetite to wanna change it, but, uh, I, I do think that, uh, that is something that gets talked about a lot. Uh, the short time I've been here, why is it commercial, why isn't it Main Street, I've heard that several, several times. Uh, but again, you know, it is helpful, we do have, um. The, uh, hitch and post here and a new commercial use here, so maybe that helps a little bit, you know, that people kinda get it, but I, I agree, if we did. The whole thing, C one, um, I think that would, that would probably help that, that situation where people saw more of a downtown, that they're coming to that, uh, particular intersection and question. Any other, any other comments on, um, anything outside of commercials? Anything, you have any interest in this? You know, should this be R five or something, should it be seven and a half, you know, should this be a high density, so if the garbage place ever moves out, you would get something here that would be more compatible across the street, because that's amazing.
I mean, basically, it's old platted, so it should be an R five if it was changed, because it's fifty by hundreds.
Across the road, those, our point seven point five across the street.
Oh, right, right, right over here, yeah. Still. And the thing is, I know that they talked about expanding the park, if they ever did, then it could expand into that block area. But yeah, it's, once again, you need to talk to the owners and find out what kind of.
Last time he sent every one of us planning commissioners a letter when we talk about rezoning his property.
But I think he did now.
The garbage trucks did, the garbage trucks did.
He's looked at barriers.
He looked at the property.
And there's actually lots around us even right here.
You know.
So what, what I'm kinda hearing right now is focus on commercial. Look at this area, see what happened here, see if we can get that back to a different zone. Reson this to residential. Maybe pump the brakes at that point.
I don't know if you, personally, I don't have any options but considering the, this stuff along twenty-six.
Down there?
Yeah, and residence, again, property owners. Discussion maybe is the right start in the one.
For that particular one, that would be the very.
I think, for sure, I think your, your comment about, hey, can we avoid a situation that we have over here, if we actively move that one there, it's probably valid.
We see a potential for conflict there.
Yeah, even though it may not be high demand, because you're trying to put loans next to twenty-six, but.
Well, then we would go for high density, we would hope that, uh, apartment or something would come into this area if we resoned it, so we resoned it to our highest, uh, residential density zone, and, uh, maybe.
Our highest residential zone does not fit apartments, because our zone.
Because we see one.
He can have his own at the fancy, no. Doesn't allow for apartments.
I'm pretty sure that is.
But the density doesn't work.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean, you can't get enough units in there for what this R two point five requires for footage.
We wouldn't be.
We'd need to modify it, because we don't have an apartment zone, because we're not friendly to apartments. We never have been, we don't have a condo zone, I mean. We just don't have, even if it was a high density zone, even if.
If the idea was, okay, let's go our two point five here, but let's also update the R two point five zone to get what we want there, which would be.
That's what you.
We believe would be apartments given proximity to what's there and the highway and everything, it would make more sense, it would be a high density type of development.
Well, the property at the end of three hundred and fourteen should probably be the same.
I'm sorry, which one is that?
At the end of three hundred and fourteenth, right there, next to that triangle that, for some reason, didn't get into the city.
That's the guy that belongs to O Doc.
No.
Does it?
Yes.
For whatever reason, they never did.
You have your point up, it's right there.
Right there, oh, right down there?
Uh, yeah, I'm on right there.
No, just part of it.
In this area here, we're getting ready to, uh, do the pedestrian connection through here, to come up over here. Um, so that makes sense to me to, you know, improve that area a little bit, because it's gonna be a real nice addition.
What I've properties on the highways, I just figured it's part of the property, basically, it's. But you're still complaining as much as. So, right, so.
Right.
A lot of it's flooding, but there still is some space for small.
No, this property, if you probably have seen its top here. At this for sale right now, um, they've been coming in regularly speaking with us about developing that property. Um, there is a, there is a flood plain on that property too, that runs across the, um, north west corner. You know, runs down to the south there, um, so most of the property is impacted by a flood plain, I shouldn't say most, but a sizable chunk is impacted by the flood plain, so. It looks like, you know, they develop, it would just be in this area right here. And maybe leave the existing home, you know, maybe they reconfigure their property through a lot line adjustment or something like that, and get a small lot around the home, and then they have a larger one. I think the idea, uh, that's been kicked around in the past, we had a pre-app on that property about a year or so ago, uh, with J T Smith, and they, they were thinking of like, um. Condos or something like that, or townhomes, something to that effect, along, um, coming down this way, like that, kind of L shape right there. But that's, um, I think the property owner backed out of the sale, and now they're back in the game when it was sold.
So, yeah, because they didn't have any access off, or they don't have any access off the, or they have to go off.
They would most likely come off the north. Um, Gordon is a county road, and so if they wanted to propose, uh, an alternative access on the border, then it would be up to the county to determine if that would be allowed or not. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's ways around some of those things, you know, you have exceptions and variances and deviations and all those different things that they could potentially request from the county, but again. We would defer any access to Gordon's county to determine what happens.
That long ago, when it was counting on both sides, so they couldn't really do hardly anything with it.
Yeah.
But now that the city owns, has the jurisdiction, they can get an access off of that.
Yeah, we would work with them on the north front edge, the county would work with them on the Gordon front edge, um, you know, maybe they propose some type of emergency access or something before it's gated, so. You know, I, I'm not sure. They might have something.
They have access from the block. But it's fenced.
So, anyhow, that was just more of a, to give you an idea that that property is for sale, or they're talking to us. High density is what's anticipated.
Yeah, it's been for several.
Well, I, I don't wanna keep you longer than you need to speak. Yes.
As I said earlier, I don't wanna get into the history of why we did this. But I was on a page five years ago, when we fill these N C zones, because they're trying to cut down the amount of acreage we had. To support the two point five. They're trying to say we need to have more two point five residential, that's what we threw it up there to eliminate some of the size of the city. To make it to, we, we had it up already, because it said according to size of the city, we need to have this many more small lots. Kind of, whoa, she's not that big as doing, and, and C, and C, you know, we're, that's the show game you played, it wasn't City Council, it's this group, we're here. I barely remember. But I'm just worried about one hand that I know that one's doing. I understand you're brand new here, and, you know, you hear all this history, and you'd be thrown under fire and dodging bullets at it. Don't, don't feel, don't look for that pressure. I do wanna know, all this change to be made, if we undo it, what's the reference that that gonna be? Because the reason why we did it before was the size of our city, we needed more two point five lots. So we had a big meeting right here, like, let's get cute, and we spent, kinda, when we did a lot of, this, this era seems like. Doing it, right, we threw all the churches into the N C zones and. Basically defining through it, right, so that's why I listened to you, because this body here, for the most part, do that. So before we undo stuff. Let's make sure that's what we wanna do.
Absolutely, I mean, in terms of undoing more than what we're talking, in terms of the N C zone and undoing that, I think that's a much bigger conversation than just changing a couple of these.
That's a conversation with city council.
Yeah.
This is a planning commission meeting, so let's stay focused.
So I think, you know, what we're talking about in terms of changing, we wanna keep it small, just where we see some discrepancies between, you know, these kind of hard lines with. Industrial right next to residential, you know, is there, is, we're just trying to get you folks to think, should we, should we consider something different there? Is that really the best way for these properties to be zoned? Should, should a residence be zoned heavy industrial? Does that make a lot of sense? I mean, we're, are we gonna get the bang for the buck that we won out of that? Is somebody gonna buy up the whole block and put something like Aiken over there, and would that be what we want backed up to these residences? You know, is that something that would make for a compatible use? It doesn't seem so, it doesn't seem to be that that would be a good fit. Um, that's why we're having a conversation with you to see, should we address that now and, and fix it? Uh, before we take the deeper dive into the overall U G B expansion, so we can get a few tweaks done, and then we'll have a better idea of what our real need is, so as we go through the U G B process. So again, just high level conversation, trying to see if we should look at some of these things, it sounds like the general consensus is, yes. Look at it along commercial, you know, look at it all the way out to Glencoe, see what that could do. Um, look at this pocket, and, you know, we'll make contact with the property owner between now and your next meeting, and let you know what we found out. This one seems to have consensus. I, and I think that's probably where I would stop, you know, um. And let us go do some research on that, let us contact property owners, do a little outreach, find out what people think, and then come back and report back to you guys that, uh, you know what? We found out it's popping up, we're gonna go very far, we didn't get a lot of support, or, you know what, hey, everybody seems to be pretty encouraged by this, and, and so, uh, maybe this is the right thing to do. So that's, that's what I'm gonna start doing, uh, based on what you guys give me direction to do from, from this meeting.
So do you need anything else from us for that?
Well, if I summarize everything, I truly, I, I think, uh, Lori's got some really great notes for us here, um, and, uh, that will give me what I need to, to drive forward on, uh, for you folks to get some answers.
Thank you. Okay, move on to, uh, item number nine, unfinished business. Assuming we have no unfinished business.
No, okay, sorry.
Item number ten is land use applications and the three J report, so.
Yes, yes.
City reported, not a three J.
We're streamlining.
So any comments, any questions or comments on that? From the planning commission? Do you have any comments, uh?
Um, we talked about the same quite a bit today, and. You guys are all familiar with Far West, so I don't know, if you wanna talk about that, well, we're familiar that we have the application, and I believe now, um, so we're doing the thirty day. Application. I think everything else is on that sheet, so unless there's one that jumps out at you that you have specific questions on, um, I believe you're pretty up to speed with, um, the big ones.
All right, any questions of the planning commission on the land use applications and the city projects report? Hey, um, so, by the.
I, I will show one, but it relates back to the sign code. Um, Shell came in, the Shell gas station at the corner, that is probably gonna change the space age, and so they wanna do some updating to their signs. Um, so there's gonna be more science upcoming, uh, I did find out in the sign code that their freestanding sign appears to be, for lack of a better term, grandfathered. In the actual specific language in the code that talks about the Chevron, the McDowell's, and that property, and maybe one other one, um, and their freestanding taxes, we don't have freestanding sites in the codes. Three, and so, uh, they wanna change the base out on that side to say space age, but the other one that is probably gonna have a little bit more of an impact is the, uh, brown mountain sign right by, uh. North, uh, west corner of the property, um, they wanna fix that up quite a bit, add digital stuff to it, so they can just, you know, when the gas prices change, they can just, you know, change it automatically without having to go out and put new numbers up. And they also wanna put a reader board on the bottom of the sign that advertises their daily specials in the store there. Um, so just, I thought since we've been talking signs, you should know that there's more signs that will probably be.
Isn't there something in our sign code, big signs like McDonald's and Shell right now, that if a certain, certain percentage is modified, that. Sign goes away. So Space Age wants to go in there and replace the whole head and stuff? That might be enough just to mix the whole thing.
I think all they wanna do is just change it like for like, so just take the Shell sign off, that dimension, and replace it with the Space Age, so.
I think it's the percentage of the, the percentage of value, or fifty percent, fifty percent of value.
Yeah, so that's just the, of the freestanding now, like I said, the monuments, and they have bigger plans for it. They actually wanted to do a lot more to that freestanding, so we put the kibosh on it, was it just, well, at the, at the most, we'll let you just change it from Shell to Space Age, that would be it. They wanted to put all the gas prices and everything below that, a whole bunch more stuff, but that ain't gonna work.
Yeah, we, yeah, had issues with that. But they are, those three properties are identified specifically in the sign code. And speaking of that, that's like I mentioned, we had a copy of the sign code, and there's a lot of modifications that probably need to be done, so another workshop on that probably wouldn't hurt us. Especially as we're moving forward with things like Taco Bell and stuff like that.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, I think there's some cleanup we can do there, add some more specifics to it, make it a little bit more, uh, clearer on what we want.
Yeah, so I don't know if that's something we wanna do in January or February, something, the sooner we do it, obviously, the better, because.
Yeah.
We, this stuff is coming too, so.
And, and to your point there, I would encourage all the, uh, planning commission to pull the sign code up and, and make any notes on it that you have, and, and share them back with us, and then we'll put a proposal together, you know, I'll go into the sign code and. Strike out things and underline things to show what y'all are looking for, we'll have our own insight and, and, um. Uh, experiences to, to kind of piggyback on that, and then we were able to go forward with a, uh, amendment and have curios.
Everyone should have pulled it because it was part of the workshop package. Okay. Okay. All right, is there any other planning commission comment? Any other stat comment?
Uh, Mayor Lanahan wanted to remind everyone about Monday night's, um, social event after the council meeting, there's been some back and forth on the time changes. We forgot we had a public hearing, and it's at seven o'clock at the council meeting, so we can't start anything until that is over here, so, um, we don't.
They can fill the ditch out front?
Yeah. I know, and I think we'll talk to, uh, Stephen Alhard and Andy about that, I think it's planned to have that, um, kind of love it out with him. Um, but plan on, uh, we don't expect anybody for the public hearing, but we have to obviously go through the process, so closer to seven thirty Monday for the social event. Um, it's kind of a first, at least since I've been here in the six and a half years, it's the first time that the mayor's invited all boards and commission members, um, she really wants to interact with everybody.
So we should show up at seven, just that.
Sure, absolutely, yeah, 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 yeah.
So, yeah, regarding your comment about what they did today, um, it was nice, they had the uh Geo, um, professional out there, so as they were X-ing, they were testing the dirt at the same time, so I think we have taken off what we need to. Um, I'm not quite sure when the gravel will come in though to prepare it for the new pavement, so it could still be dirt by next Monday.
Very soon, I'm sure, because otherwise it will be mud.
Yeah, I I know they're working quickly and and they have it scheduled, but I I can't tell you definitively that it'll be done by Monday.
Is there gonna be a, an actual sidewalk from the steps out, or is it just gonna be asphalt part of the driveway?
I, that's a good question, I'm not sure, let me, oh.
Oh, yeah, I can find the plants or.
No, we weren't part of that, that was.
Pedestrian walkway outside.
There was not a site plant that we looked at.
That is common to have that type of walkway from your entry to the sidewalk to separate people from the vehicles, so my instincts tell me that that's probably gonna happen, but I've not seen the plan, so let me run that.
Just the way it's dug up, it doesn't look like it's part of the plan.
No, I think they found that those soft dirts extended a lot further than they thought. Um, because they were started, you know, they were in the middle of the parking lot today, and now they ended up all the way at the end, so um, that, all of that extra excavation work was to relieve those soils from the site, so um, I think we're all surprised that they came this far.
Is it from the trees? Has to.
I'm sorry.
It's from the trees?
I'm not sure what caused the soils to become soft and and what they call squishy, you know, but, uh, I I I just don't know, um, you know, it could have been bad pavement, it could have been secreted with oil.
It's all the spit.
Very.
All the garlic, city beer, and the beer. I don't think they really know what caused it, to be honest with you.
Okay, if there's no other commission business, our next meeting is January the eleventh. And I want to wish everyone a happy holiday, Merry Christmas. You too, and the meeting is the.